Okay, all right. That clock says seven o'clock. This one does too. Oh, and this one does too. Why, we are synced here. Both clocks say seven o'clock. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And just a friendly reminder, if you have cell phones with you, please turn them on silent or airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. I think I already did that. It would be very embarrassing if I forgot. Anyway, first order, I'd like to ask that you join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. The United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion of justice, law, and order.
So welcome, everybody, this evening that's here and also later on watching on YouTube. Welcome, Mr. Kirkwood, and also people from Minnehaw Creek Watershed District. We have a kind of a skeleton crew here this evening, but we will make do and we will have a fabulous meeting. First order, I'd like to do introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin and Claudia Lacy. And then on the end, we have Matt. What's your last name again?
Chris Bumbers.
Chris. We used to... Why did you change?
It's been a while, Chris.
Chris, why did you change your name?
I was still a little more of Chris than Matt.
Yeah, okay. I'm used to saying Allison Fousky, and she's not here, and all of a sudden we're going, oh geez, okay, don't change your name again, okay? Thank you. And then we have Gary Peters, who is our Public Works Director. And then to my right, we have Jasper Krugel, who is our City Administrator, Brian Grimm, who is our Finance Director. And then sitting in for our regular attorney is Peter Michaels with Kennedy and Graven. And then Paul, who is our Chief of Police, Paul Falls, thank you. So with that, are there any changes to the agenda? I don't believe so. If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia, Ms. Lacy. I always call you Ms. Claudia. It sounds so much nicer. Yeah, it sounds nice. Anyhow, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes three O. So next, we have our special presentations, and with us this evening, we have some individuals from Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, James Whiskers. Why don't you come to the podium and introduce yourselves?
Sure, you want to introduce yourself?
Mayor Whelan, council members. My name is Sherri White, I live in Orno, and I'm President of the Board of Managers of Minnehaw Creek Watershed District. And we are just delighted with giving us the opportunity to come here and talk about things that we're doing in Minnetrista and elsewhere in the district throughout the watershed. We really appreciate all of the cooperation and partnership that we have in your city over the years, and look forward to continuing partnerships.
And I should have said, thank you for coming, because we really appreciate the partnership, and we appreciate all that you do too for water quality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Whisker and Mike Kamen are here. James is District Administrator. Mike Kamen is our Head of our Project Planning Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, Mayor Whelan, Council, Jasper, staff, for having us here this evening. I think we're fully introduced. We have Jim White, your two former Mayor of Orno. But I'm James Whisker, I'm the Administrator for the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District. And like Sherri said, it's my pleasure to be here with you all this evening to provide an update on some of our work as it relates to our long history of partnership with the City of Minnetrista. Jasper has been set up through the clicker, so first IT test is kind of turn it on.
Oh, yeah, turn it on, yeah.
And where do I point? Go to the point.
Let me try it one more time.
He did warn me to get here early for my...
No, no, it's all right. If you want, I can take a look at it, or I can subtext it too.
So I'm not the only one that's technically challenged?
You can always go with the tested head nod.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's going to have to be it, yeah.
This is going to be a test to see how I think we are partners here. So my first head nod. So to get us started, this picture heavy, so I'll be ready to kind of click through these, Jasper. But to get us started, I thought I'd cover some basic backgrounds. It's real interesting to see who's been here, and get us started just in terms of geography and approach in the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District. So this is our watershed. We cover 178 square mile area in the west metro. We have a really rich tapestry of land use and natural resources and communities. And our watershed is located in portions of Hennepin and Carver County. We cover 29 different cities ranging from fairly rural and ex-urban in the west, all the way to urban in the east in the city of Minneapolis. We have over 120 different lakes, if you can believe that, a number of major stream systems, and we have really iconic resources that you're all familiar with, like Lake Minnetonka, or our namesake Minnehaha Creek, the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes, and of course, Minnehaha Falls. So keep moving to the next slide, it's my second head nod. So in terms of how we approach the work, the watershed district really believes that natural systems underpin local community identity and community sense of place, and that when we, when those things are integrated, that the watershed's work is really integral to building thriving communities. Jasper, keep moving here. So because how we use our land drives the amount of water and the quality of water running off the landscape, and the watershed district doesn't own all the land, and we don't control all the decisions that are made about it, whether we're working on capital projects or we're shaping policy, we're always thinking about how our time, how our investments can be catalysts for the goals of our partners like you and the built environment. And we do that by taking a data-driven understanding, and then if you'll go to the next one and just keep me moving, we're going to layer in our partners' objectives, which might relate to transportation and infrastructure or community development, which is the next slide, or parks and open space. And finally, the community, really with a goal of creating amazing places in the watershed that we think are good for the environment, they're good for communities, and they're good for people. So if you go to the next slide, in recent years, as part of what we call our Lake Minnetonka Strategy, the watershed district's been focused on the largest polluting tributaries into the lake. So rather than being inside the lake, we're focusing on these large land areas that drain into the lake. And that vision and strategy's been hard at work in this part of the upper watershed in the Six Mile Creek-Hallstead Bay area, all 27 square miles of which are tributary to Hallstead Bay on Lake Minnetonka, which is impaired for water quality. And Minnetrista here has been an early partner, as we've collaborated on acquisitions for conservation around Hallstead Bay, and we've worked with local landowners to guide subdivision planning and private wetland banking. And I'm going to talk about a couple of those examples later. So, perfect timing, we're still synced, Jasper. So to help ground all of our partners, leading up to the 2017 plan, which is our 10-year planning cycle, we spent time really understanding the natural system within the watershed and the, thank you very much, the runoff and pollutant loading from the landscape, the legacy phosphorus trapped inside these lakes, and then finally, there we go, how common carp in these lakes were contributing to poor water quality. And we then moved beyond the watershed science into understanding the goals and needs of our various partners, and this is just a key part of our process. So we spent a lot of time sitting down with planners, with engineers, with elected officials like yourselves, Lake Association members, all in search of local context. And some years later now, many years later, in browsing your 2040 plan, it was really great to see, I think we still have strong vision alignment between the two organizations. The city's prepared for significant growth in the next 20 years. You're continuing to lift up preservation of your rural character and the natural environment, the parks, trails, and Lake Minnetonka as defining natural assets for the city, as the city thoughtfully plans for infrastructure and housing and services to support that growth through aligned partnerships, hopefully with key partners like us. There we go. So we use what we learned about that landscape and all of our partners to develop a clear strategy for this area, leading up to our 2017 plan for improving water quality by breaking down this 27 square mile geography into manageable pieces that we call management units. And that's guided us systematically through improvement type landscape, managing common carp, and dealing with water quality inside the lake, generally moving from upstream to downstream to improve water quality as we track down towards, from the headwaters all the way down to Hallstead Bay. And among many landscape restoration projects, we've worked closely with the National Home Builders, this is just one example, the NARDA take what they viewed as a regulatory liability and a pinch point in their land development process, and we turned it into a 12-acre wetland mitigation and restoration opportunity upstream on the south side of Wasserman Lake. Looking system-wide, with express support from partners like Minnetrista, we were able to work with the university to understand the common carp populations through this 14-lake chain, how they move, where they reproduce, and use that information to develop a management plan that was supported with legislative funding of $600,000 to implement one of the state's largest rough fish management efforts, ultimately removing over a quarter million pounds of carp and helping restore 2,500 acres of in-lake shallow habitat and along with it, water quality. At Wasserman Lake and nearby Wasserman Lake ponds, again, this is upstream in the city of Victoria, to address internal loading from the lake, we secured state grant funds and have directly dosed Wasserman Lake and those nearby areas with alum to address internal sources of phosphorus. And that work led to a five-year collaboration with community members, the city council, the NARSA design team, to acquire and provide programmed access to this last remaining piece of land available around Wasserman Lake at a high point overlooking the entire lake to develop a nature-based space that supports the community's long-term vision as the city of lakes and parks. And that ecologically-based park provides public access to a restored Wasserman Lake - I'm on a clicker, you can do it - with a shelter and picnic areas and nature play. Is my kids trying to not hurt themselves? It's really helped people and kids immerse creatively and connect with nature. There's community gathering space for people to get together and celebrate and be in nature, and of course, access to the water. And so there's some examples of work that we're doing actually outside of the community or across the whole system that benefit water here in Minnetrista. But downstream, we were equally excited this year to complete a similar nature-based place with, that's been long coordinated with our partners here at the city of Minnetrista in the form of the Six Mile Marsh Prairie Restoration. And these are pictures from that title slide that you were asking me about. This project first began in 2012 when we decided to work together on honoring the landscape legacy of two agricultural landowners here in the city, the Howerson and the Dimler families, who together owned over 230, 30 acres of farmland that was adjacent to the regionally significant Six Mile Marsh and Hallstead Bay on Lake Minnetonka. There we go. Through dialogue with both of those landowners, those farmers and citizens from the city, and coordination with the surrounding neighborhoods, the watershed district acquired those properties with this vision of restoring the natural features of the site and then also providing access to the restored property from the Dakota Regional Trail. And so through the removal of buildings and breaking of drain tile and revegetation of the site, the property now includes over 124 acres of restored prairie, 80 acres of marsh and open water wetlands shown here in this picture, 22 acres of oak savanna, and four acres of oak woodland. And with over a mile of trail loop now, providing a new space for the community to connect with the city's natural assets. And the trail and interpretation work was completed this year, and with the project also including its preservation of the red barn...
Last year.
Last year. It is 24, that's a good point. I'm living in the past. And it included the preservation of the red barn, which is really a key feature of the site, which ties back to the legacy of the land and is a high priority for the community who engaged in the restoration planning. And we've tried to integrate the barn into the site interpretation with picnic benches, signage, and these viewing portals that are actually cut into the side of the barn, which tell the story of how the landscapes evolved over time and honor the original owners. The trail loop also provides access to these just amazing views that this property has to offer, is it looks down over the Six Mile Marsh like this one here, which really helps visitors understand the transition between these different ecosystems that are on site. So whether that's the savanna, the wetland edge, or down into the marsh. And it brings also a sense of scale within the regional geography. As you can see from this vantage, you know, we have many of the different biomes, the prairie, the wetlands, the oak savanna in the backdrop, all framed against the, I think that's the Chen Hassan Water Tower about eight miles away. And so through the 160 acres of restored vegetation and the nine wetlands that we've integrated back into the site, this project's estimated to have prevented over 180 pounds of phosphorus, or 12 tons of sediment annually, from entering the marsh and then entering the lake. And if you zoom out to the watershed scale, because we're working in multiple different communities here, the big message is overall, the work is working. The systematic, data-driven approach that integrates into community planning is having great effect. Most telling is that since beginning our work eight years ago, if you look back upstream now at Wasserman Lake, this wouldn't be a watershed presentation without a graph, Wasserman Lake has met its water quality standards for the first time in its monitored history. So we're tracking towards removing that lake from the impaired waters list, and importantly for us all here, it's now consistently sending cleaner water downstream, which is really important as we move our way down. And so that's really where that work takes us next, in terms of our upcoming priorities. With work concluding at Wasserman, we are turning our attention downstream opportunities. There's a wetland complex just south of Wasserman Lake, but in the city of Minnetrista, we're very interested in areas that are tributary to Mud Lake and longer-term potential alum dosing or alum dosing facility to help address internal loading at Hallstead Bay. So to wrap things up for tonight, I wanted to let the council know also that following a year of community engagement and really good positive feedback from our technical advisory committee, which is comprised of your engineers and staff, at the end of 2023, we adopted this land and water partnership program, which is really a complement to what we call our focal geography approach, the approach I just described, where we're really intensively focused in one particular area. You should all have handouts that you've received through the mail, but if you haven't let me know, I brought a few copies with me. This program is really intended to ensure that we remain responsive to community needs in the event we're not actively engaged in leading a project at that moment in time. This program is intended to be an on-ramp into our capital improvement plan. So we're offering planning, technical assistance, as well as capital funding for eligible projects. And part of this effort is also focused on the streamlining of our permitting process to make sure that we're putting a partnership lens in terms of how we're interacting with the public and private land use partners as they come in for permits. And perhaps one last plug, I would just say, we have a history of that type of work here in Minnetrista. Several years ago now, we partnered with the Mater Family Trust with city support to co-plan a 77-acre development with our technical assistance. The family ultimately pursued a conservation subdivision, and they were able to restore over 30 acres of wetland into a private bank. So they got the subdivision, the private bank, and that helped them conserve their family legacy. This was land that had been handed down through multiple generations. It, I think, injected a million dollars into their pro forma, and it created a source of wetland credits in the watershed as other projects drive impact. So it really was that triple bottom line, and it was an example of development coming through the land use process and the city reaching out to the district and encouraging partnership, which is what that program is all about. So next steps in terms of that program really just involve the communications and marketing of the launch this year, and then getting projects in pipeline and monitoring how it's going and making adjustments as needed there. So as developments come through, as your own infrastructure projects come through, please think of us, reach out, make a connection. And with that, I think we've looked back at where we started, we've proposed some of the things that we've accomplished outside of the city and together, and given a quick glimpse ahead, and hopefully done it in some sort of reasonable timeframe. So I'll just finish by saying thank you and seeing if there's any questions from anybody.
I have a few. So especially with the prairie restoration project, the Dimler and Halverson properties, if they had continued to actively farm it, do you know what the phosphorus loading would have been? Do you know that?
It was, you know, the estimates, it's a sensitive area, sort of modeling agricultural and production land, but those lands were drained out and were transmitting runoff straight to the marsh. By our estimate, somewhere between 150 and 180 pounds of phosphorus appear, about 12 tons of sediment coming out through wind and underwater.
And so because it's no, number one, it's no longer farmed or agricultural, and you said you were removing about 80, 80 pounds? What did you say? How many pounds are you removing?
We're removing that same amount.
About 120, okay. Yeah, that's a lot. Okay. And then carp, tell me a little more about carp. So you harvested all this carp, that's great, but how do you keep them out? You know, that's, I think, the big question.
So it's really a three-pronged strategy, and I don't think that we're pretending that we're done. And so, you know, one of the things that we did, Mayor and Council, is we did three years of diagnostic monitoring with state-leading researchers from the University of Minnesota. So they're really kind of on the front edge of the science. So they were tracking migration patterns where they're aggregating in the winter and the areas that they were spawning in. And then that informed a management strategy of implementing barriers at select locations to isolate the population, aeration in what's called the carp nurseries where they lay their eggs and go to spawn, to promote bluegill abundance, which predate carp eggs and eat them, and then actual physical removals to get the numbers to a manageable level. And across the system, we did get carp populations below the 100 kilogram per hectare sort of magic number identified by the researchers, and now we're in sort of a sustainment and ongoing management phase for the project. The other thing that we're doing is taking everything that we've learned and lifting that up with the DNR, the Minnesota AAS Research Center, and the Pollution Control Agency to draw out lessons learned. You know, I don't think we did things perfectly. We're all about the science and learning, and that's going to be finished in terms of, in the next year or so, to guide how other people might undertake the work. So we're continuing to implement the barriers, we're maintaining the aeration systems, and then periodically, we're going in and doing removals based on monitoring data.
Because I know one of the barriers is on Six Mile Marsh, Highland Road, right?
That's right.
And it's interesting.
That one's an operated barrier too, where it's essentially coming up and down to allow fish migration at select times during the season, so that we're not having a negative impact on native species.
Okay. Because one time, I know I went by there, and there were just like thousands, I mean literally hundreds probably of carp, but it was interesting. And then just another couple of questions. So you have some property along Six Mile Marsh on, just off of Farm Hill, and it's kind of designated as a future alum treatment plant. Any idea, so now you're working upstream, I get that, I understand that, but now as you're working downstream, at what point do you think you're going to be addressing the internal loading on Hallstead? I mean, I know you already are somewhat with the carp, but in addition to that...
The long-term strategy for Hallstead Bay is really two-pronged. Upstream, there's two shallow lakes, upstream of the marsh part of the above, and the part of the carp management is going to turn the water quality of those shallow lakes and as well dealing with the land that drains to those. We know that the benefit of that work on Hallstead Bay will take a very long time. And so the secondary approach is to address the loading inside the bay to allow the landscape improvements to take effect over time. And so as you pointed out, Mayor, I think back when Three Rivers Park District was doing acquisitions around Six Mile Marsh as the creek enters Hallstead Bay for their regional trail crossing and their trail corridor planning long-term, they approached us with an opportunity to co-acquire land, and so we do have a piece of property there of Farm Hill. That's in our capital, in our five-year capital improvement plan to be advanced in the technical feasibility, as well as a funding study over the next year and a half. So we have one similar facility that we've implemented with the city of Richfield over on Tap Lake. We're trying to take lessons learned from there. Our board really wants to dive deep into the technical basis of feasibility because it's complicated, and then we'll need to start putting together a funding strategy. So I would say in the next 24 months, we're going to be entering the feasibility phase, and then from there, it could be three to six years, honestly, before we would be close to implementation, because it's a sizable project, it's going to require operating partners, conversations with the city, neighbors, Metropolitan Council, and a significant amount of outside funding.
So it would basically filter the water out of Six Mile Marsh and then put it back in, filtered?
Yeah, essentially. Six Mile Marsh, our science has shown that there's a decent amount of sediment that goes into that wetland.
Right.
And then what comes out is highly dissolved. So you can think about the marsh essentially as a converter. It's taking sediment and then it's turning out dissolved phosphorus, which doesn't settle. And so that's the entire purpose of that facility, would be to extract the nutrient-rich dissolved water, dissolve phosphorus in the water, flock that and put clean water back.
And I'm assuming you would do an alum treatment in Hallstead Bay before that would happen as well?
That's part of the technical feasibility. I mean, the sustainability of, and the impact of that against the cost, how that's going to be sustained, you know, there's carp populations in the lake, it's a shallow lake, and there's internal loading in the bay, that's really the basis of the feasibility.
All right, well, we're anxious to get that done. So, and I know these things take a while, so I understand. Any other questions?
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
It's winter and it's salt. You know, we calibrate our trucks, you know, try to do our part, but yeah, do you guys reach out to local businesses and local contractors when you go into a parking lot and it's completely white? I mean, it is just blanketed with salt. All it ends up in, you know, in streams, creeks, you know, vents of the lake, I mean, that's just as detrimental as anything else. Do you guys reach out and do anything with that? Because we can do anything, we want, you know, we get to watch our stuff, the county, the state, you know, watch all that. When you get these contractors just come in there and just literally turn parking lots white, snows, they do it again. You know, I mean, what good is it for us to monitor it and keep track, you know, and try to control it when they don't? Do you guys have a program, or are you guys thinking or working on something to reach out to these businesses? I know, and no offense to our lawyer present here, I know it's all because of the lawyers and slip and falls, they don't want that stuff, but, you know, it's, it's just disheartening for us. I mean, even watching Hennepin County come through, they are ridiculous with their salt use. I mean, it's just, it's, it's to the point where, I mean, you know, let's go back to salt sand. You know, I mean, sand's not very good either, but at least, you know, kind of curtail the salt use. So I'm just wondering if you guys have, we're trying to work with, or have any ideas of what you can do for that? I mean, that's the biggest thing for us.
Right. That's a great question, and that's kind of a preeminent issue in the water resource community, and as a northern climate, until we can find as a community of people a different solution to making the roads safer, whether that's not traveling or...
Slow down.
A different chemical, or slow down, or, you know, any other combination. Chloride is going to just be an issue. It does accumulate, and it's not going to go away, and so we're on a slow track towards having all of our freshwater systems repaired by chloride. I think the general approach of the public sector has been, let's do what we can do to set leading examples. So the highway department and transportation agencies, Public Works, have really done a great job investing in technology, whether in brine and the GPS technology to make sure that there's really judicious application. I think those are the leading examples for what the private sector could be doing. At a legislative level, there are, there've been two or three rounds of legislation introduced in the last three sessions to limit liability for the application of commercial properties to get less salt down on the ground because of slip and falls, and that has not seen much, seen much joy there. There is a Hennepin County Chloride Coalition. So Hennepin County is part of the Twin Cities Chloride TMDL, and there's a grouping of many watersheds and cities and the county that have partnered there to push communication and marketing and education and awareness out to commercial operators. But, I mean, I think you just, you understand the issue obviously quite well, being in Public Works, and what the challenges are at a commercial level. And absent regulation or legislation or a different technological solution, there's really not a tremendous amount of watershed districts in a position to do. So we are part of that coalition for outreach, and we've seen agencies like yourself do a great job, but that's probably the extent of my knowledge on chloride.
I know that there's... I know that there's some, there's a salt symposium. I don't know how much they reach out to private entities, but I know a lot of the public works and, and public entities go to that, which is helpful.
There's certifications for applicators and all those sorts of things, but anybody that's been to target and the regener or any commercial property kind of are familiar with the issue.
Right, right. All right.
Good questions.
Thank, thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and coming out. It's a good thing it's not so cold tonight, so.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So our next special presentation is regarding our GFOA award, and is that going to be Jasper or Brian? I know you, you received the award.
I received the award. No one's giving it to me, I guess.
Well, I, I
No, I'm presenting it to council, I guess. No, and actually, this is more than just the one, this is definitely a team effort. For this award every year, as I think I mentioned in the memo, there is obviously Angie and Renee in the finance department play a big role, as well as even just the other, you know, department directors, you know, Derry and obviously Jasper being supportive and council being supportive of going for this award, which the city has received since 2004, so that's a pretty good streak of, of getting it, you know, going back 18 years or so. So this is our 2022 award, because basically we submitted that last spring, summer, and then it goes through a review process, and then we will again be submitting our 2023 financial report once we have that ready this spring. So we plan on doing that again, and I think I note in there, the, the Government Finance Officers Association reviewer found only four comments to suggest for next year for incorporation, so that's pretty good, that, you know, basically we were proficient in all areas and basically scored, scored very well, so that's always exciting. And I don't have any really pictures, like the previous, no, or anything I can show, but no, it's, it is, no, seriously.
It is a pretty prestigious award.
It is a prestigious award. And, yeah, I'm definitely
In finance reporting, yep.
Yep, yep. So it's definitely something we are, are proud of, that in the finance department as well, so hopefully the city overall, I'm sure.
Yeah. No, we're proud that you do this, and, and congratulations to you and your team. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, they have presented this to us, to the city, but obviously it goes to you and, and your team doing this. And it's, it's good that you do this, we appreciate the extra effort that it takes, and congratulations yet again.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, and it is additional information that, you know, anyone that wants to read the audit report, it, it turns our report
Oh, yeah, we like doing that, you know.
Yeah, 100 pages to like 120 or so, but yeah, it's definitely, yeah, it's, it's worth it, I think, for multiple reasons.
Thank you, Brian. And again, congratulations. So you folks don't have to stay, but you're welcome to. So we don't have anybody signed up under persons to be heard, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items, and they consist of approve our work session meeting minutes from January 8th, 2024, approve our city council regular meeting minutes from January 8th, 2024, approve, C is approve our claims, D is approve our plans and specs and authorize advertisement for bids for our 2024 street improvement projects, and then E is a resolution appointing election judges for the March 5th presidential primary, and then F is a resolution to approve our task order number eight, which is general services agreement with advanced engineering and environmental services, otherwise known as A to S. Any questions or any you need to remove? Okay, with that, is there a consent to approve consent agenda A, B, C, D, E, and F?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So we'll move on to our public hearings. We have one public hearing, it's approving an easement vacation for 31s between, I should say, 3116 and 3320 Williams Lane. This has been a request by Sharon Thaler, the property owner, actually she owns both properties. I'll just quickly open the public hearing, since I have to open it, even though there's nobody here, public hearing is open. Okay, public hearing is closed. There's nobody here, so we can close it right away, and I'll move it on to Jasper or anybody.
Yeah, I can just give a brief update on this.
Sure.
This is a simple subdivision that was approved, I believe, the last meeting or the meeting in December. We, we were waiting for some feedback from Minnehaw Creek Watershed District on this. They needed to weigh in on this vacation. So you can see up on the screen, that's the area that will be vacated, and I will entertain any questions.
I think a new, new one is, is or was created.
On the property, on the, on the new property line, this is just the old property line vacated part.
Right. No questions, pretty simple. Okay. All right. Is there then a motion to approve the easement vacation at 3316 and 3320 Williams Lane?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or discuss? Thank you, Ms. Refkin, for a second. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 3-0. I was going to say 5-0. I'm so used to saying 5-0. Yeah, there you go. So next we have our staff reports.
I can either provide the update or Mayor Whaling can.
Go ahead.
But we were both at the, we were invited to Senate bonding tour presentation, what was it, last Wednesday? We were part of, I think there were technically four presenters, two counties or county entities, and then St. Paul College and then ourselves. So I thought we did the best, but we'll see what, what happened or what happens. The legislative session, I believe, kicks off February 12th. We have city day at the Hill. We're going to work on scheduling meetings with some of the, the Senate Capital Investment Committee, the House Capital Investment Committee Chair and Vice Chairs, and, and try to, try to lever, leverage as much as we can to try to get some funds this year. So really, we're working on the wells this year, and then next year is the, the treatment plant, but we've requested funds for the, the whole project, so. We're hopeful, but we will see.
So just kind of piggybacking on that, I think Jasper's correct, we had the best presentation. Well, okay, St. Paul College did a very nice presentation. They, they, they were very polished and, and very professional. The other ones, we did better. Anyhow, having said that, I also think that we had a better, so the St. Paul College was in a different category for bonding funds. We're in a, in the city bonding fund, and the other ones that were there for that fund, for that category, I think we would score much higher than they did. But again, this, we were just one of four, and this was, and they go all around the entire city. So one of the things that we're up against is this year, in this category, there's only $40 million so far that the governor has proposed. So that, that, there may have to be some little wiggle room there, we don't know what will happen in this House and Senate, what they'll do or what they'll propose, but it's, yeah, it's going to be a bit of an uphill battle. But I think our request for good, quality, safe, healthy drinking water bodes better than like needing money for a street improvement project, so. Having said that, also just wanted to mention, our Senator Kelly Morrison was there, she's not on the committee, but she did want to come and support us and show her support for that, which was very nice of her to do as well. And so, and then afterwards, I had an opportunity and I spoke briefly with the chair and the vice chair of the bonding committee as well, to just try and talk to them and hello and thank you for having us on the tour. So again, as Jasper said, we will continue our quest and continue our, yeah, whatever, to try and get more money for that, so. Yep. And thank you for being there, that was great help, and thank you for putting those little bags together too. That was nice. Any other reports?
I attended the last Gillespie Center board meeting, and they just kind of explained their new management and what they're trying to do. They are really desperately in need of having an active fundraising new strategy, so we're working on that. Also met with the West Hocke Community and Commerce Organization, they're really in need of volunteers, getting a little tired, and, but they do lots of beautiful things, as you know, they're, the polar plunge is coming up, and they, they are a very active group, but very much looking for volunteers, so that's really all we discussed.
Okay. I know it's volunteering and
Yep, everyone needs volunteers.
It does, it doesn't matter what organization you're with, they all need volunteers, everybody's so busy, so totally understand that. Okay, I'm, I don't have anything else to report, so with that, we can be adjourned if there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 3-0, and we are adjourned until the 5th.